Is on file in the office of the township clerk. Being written notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, was mailed to Burlington County Times, was filed with the clerk of the Mount Holly Township, and was mailed to all persons who requested in case of such notice.
Item number one on our agenda is our solicitor's collective. We can all stand.
Flight agents.
Yes, sir.
The last word.
As we all just understand, one nation under God, indivisible, whatever the individual's law.
Item number two are matters referred to the planning board by the township council. It's proposed to township council ordinance twenty three twenty three dash five, adopting a single site redevelopment plan for the Madison Park there site, known as twenty three twenty two Mill Street, block eighty five, lot twelve, and nineteen Church Street, block eighty five, lot forty two. And we're reviewing that for master plan consistency. Will the solicitor help lead us through that review?
Surely, and just for your reference and for reference of members of the public, this is whenever the governing body adopts an ordinance or introduces an ordinance affecting land use, such as this one involving redevelopment and a review of a redevelopment plan for consistency with the master plan, it has to come before this board for that type of determination as to whether the proposed plan is consistent with the master plan. And that's what this ordinance does, it refers the plan to the board. Mr. Fox of ERI has already submitted the plan. You've been provided with a copy of the plan. And Mr. Caluio Kalani is here tonight to, the board's planner, is here tonight to provide any summary as to consistency with the master plan. And it just deals with the goals of planning for the township and the master plan. And I think it's sort of, I don't think it really changes the zoning for that area.
No, I mean, the zoning stays with both properties. I mean, it is a split zone, one's in the B one business district, the other's in the MRV. So any development occurs on it, it's basically a quarter acre park, two lots. Any development that takes place on that will conform to the ordinance. And according to the redevelopment plan, it does meet, it's consistent with the master plan and it does help revitalize the downtown, it's a whole, it's a spur of redevelopment in this area. Township owns both lots and it'll make it easier for a developer to come in and change the size. And also it'll improve quality housing shot. And any plans to come, you know, for approval before we get a chance to look at them, have any comments?
So isn't your professional opinion that this plan is consistent with the township's master plan?
Yes, it does meet the goal.
And would you suggest, you've got a chance to review the plan proposed by Mr. Fox of your office, right?
Yeah, next quarter.
Sure. And you think it's consistent and you would recommend that the board adopt it?
I would, yes. I think of the downtown as just to get the ball rolling. And like I said, it's going to comport with the existing zoning down there, so.
Could I ask one question? Not to do what it is, but it says that on page ten, it says, "This plan shall require the redevelopers to install electric vehicle charging infrastructure within the project area." What?
That's like a state ordinance statute. And it really applies depending on if it's being installed, it's going to happen when either an existent, make it available in the form of future.
So it wouldn't actually apply to this unless they have?
I couldn't see it yet, and I doesn't look right. But it's, you know, it's not true, you never have. And if the workings are gone, it probably is a good thing they're having, so.
Does the board have any comments, questions? Or Mr. Kay, do you mind, is that calling Mr. Kay?
I'll call the worst.
Hearing no more questions, should I go to, should I go to our professionals for any comments?
I don't have anything further to add, I think, I think that Mr. Kay has summarized it adequately. Unless anybody else has a question.
I don't have any engineering comments.
No comments from the board, no comments from the professionals. Then I believe that we should open this up to hear comments from those in attendance. Is that correct, Madam Solicitor?
You can, yes, you can open it up.
So we'll open this up for comments. We'll start in the first row. We can go my left to right, which would be your right to left, starting from first to second, to third, all the way to, to the rear.
And it's only on this ordinance, it's not on anything else?
It's only referred to what, this consistency with the master plan in this particular ordinance. If you have other questions, you can ask them and label on the public portion. So for the first row, do you have any questions?
Louis Lopez, eleven ninety eight Lewis Drive, Mount Holly, New Jersey. This is one for the subject by the township council ordinance, right? The very first one?
What's the first one, Louis?
I've got a question about the church on Pine Street. What's its status and what's its future?
That's not, that's not what I was thinking.
Oh, okay.
It's a hardware store, it's a gravel parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the first row? From the second row. Is there anyone who has comments or questions from the second row? Third row?
Randy Rocknell, thirty three, you and she. Sorry, I couldn't hear because it's hard to hear back here. What exactly, I didn't hear exactly what the ordinance was for, for the use of on the property amount. Can you just repeat that, I couldn't actually hear, sorry.
Sure.
Yeah, it's basically to take these two properties and combine them into one lot. And they are in two different zones. One's in the B one, so any use that's permitted in the B one use district would be permitted here. And the parking lot behind it, the gravel parking lot is in the MRV, so it's the same thing. Whatever's permitted in that district would be able to be permitted.
So it's not for developers, just combined the two lots?
No, it's just to combine them and say, or avail.
All right, stop saying things with explanation.
Right, any more comments in that row? In the next row, we'll open up for comments. And I don't know where I am right now, but maybe the last row. It's hard to see from here, are there any comments in the last row? So I'm assuming we have no more comments, the second, correct? Thank you very much for all your comments.
Is there a motion by members of the board to adopt the findings and the recommendation of the board's planner and to find that the ordinance and the proposed redevelopment plan are consistent with the master plan and to authorize the board's secretary in consultation with the solicitor to report the same back to the township council? And I did prepare a resolution for the chairman's signature.
So moved. We have a little question.
Mr. Ether?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Ms. Sossier?
Yes.
Ms. Savage?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So the motion passes. Madam Solicitor, do we, did you say that this takes care of the ordinance also? Would we have to vote?
No, that takes care of the ordinance, because I, we combine the two in the same, same action.
Thank you very much. Item number three on our agenda tonight is new business. We have applications, we have three applications. The first application is twenty twenty two dash five for four hundred Mountview Avenue. The applicant is Numany Woodson.
It's actually Numany, spell check was about me.
Numany Woodson. Four hundred Mountview Avenue, block twenty eight, lot ten. It's in an R two zone. They're looking for a D one variance to permit the existing dwelling to be utilized as a duplex for rental purposes.
Do we want to note the ones that the applicants, applications that are being adjourned? Because there are a number of people here and they may be interested in another one. So if you don't want, can we jump to the next one?
Twenty two, the application. We're going to the next application quickly, that's application twenty twenty three dash three. It's for Grant Street. It's F Palanti LLC. It's block forty one oh three, forty one point oh three, lot sixteen. It's an R one zone. They're looking for preliminary and major fights, final site plan approval. And the applicant is requesting to subdivide the tract into seven lots. Six lots will be used for the construction of three sets of proposed twin, in fact, single family homes. And the remaining lot would be an open space lot proposed to be dedicated to the township. And my agenda at the bottom tells me that the submissions are incomplete for this application. And that means this will be continued?
That's correct. I believe the board professionals found that the submissions were incomplete. I'm not sure that they advertised yet.
They did advertise.
They did advertise, so it would be continued to the May fifteenth meeting. That's the date we have scheduled for that app. So this matter is being adjourned to May fifteenth, the next regular meeting. So if anybody has an interest in that application, it will be heard on May fifteenth with no further notice or mailing. So that's F Palanti LLC forty two, Black Pine Lane. I'm sorry, yeah, and block forty one point oh three, lot sixteen. Thanks, thank you.
I thought we moved to that.
That's all we need to do for that one. And then we also have the next one too. Right?
He's here. No, he's, he's here.
Okay.
Going back to our previous application, twenty twenty two, four hundred Mountview Avenue. Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening, my name is Alan Etten, here on behalf of the applicant, Numany Woodson. I'll have three witnesses to be sworn, but before I told the witnesses, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to submit two items which were attached to my application. Miss, as you will hear from the testimony, Ms. Woodson is the owner of the property and has a tenant upstairs and received the summons, because the summons indicated, oh, you can't have a tenant upstairs. That's why we're here, that's why I filed an application for a use variance to use it, which we will, you will hear, really is two units. However, before I begin, I would like to just submit two documents which are already attached. So the first document is an email before my client bought the property. She's going to testify to this, but my preliminary argument is this is a case of equitable reliance. When my client followed all the rules, went to buy a house, you'll hear her testimony, and even received, and the reason why I want to do this before her testimony, she received from her realtor a copy of an email that Jeffrey Reeve, the housing official, said to one of the agents in an email, and you have it attached, "I spoke with the owner, unfortunately, we do not retain housing records for that long, so we don't have anything on record for the rental portion. However, the property is still listed as a two-family on our tax records and they kept both kitchens, so they just need to register and get the rental inspections once again." That's attached, I'm submitting again as as a entry, and, and I want-
Could you give it to the board secretary, please?
Oh, okay. As I say, it should be attached to everyone's.
It is.
Is it?
It's with the application, I can say.
I just wanted to submit it into evidence, because I think this is important for the board to understand the nature of my client. She's not trying to pull a fast one over on this board, for the contrary, she followed the rules. The second thing is, once she bought it, and you will hear this testimony, I don't want to testify for her, she went to the township again. And although it's in the name of, it's the property and it happened, and the inspection was done on June seventh by your housing inspector, and she said, "I want to rent it out, I need an inspection." They gave her a certificate of approval. So I want to submit that as well, that's also attached. Having said that, I'd like to call up the three witnesses, I may have a fourth, but I'd like to call three witnesses to be sworn and then we can proceed. Numany? What?
Could we just go with the first ones?
You want to do one at a time? Okay, less room, seven minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Woodson, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this board? And you'll have to keep your voice up so that all the board members can hear you.
Is everything getting picked up from?
This microphone actually picks up very well, it's just the audience needs to keep their talking down or relax.
Okay. Lou, I have a list that you can use just for your reference.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, okay. Numany, you've been sworn. You're under oath?
Yes.
Okay, just move up a little, okay? And your address, once again?
Four hundred Mountview Avenue, Mount Holly, New Jersey.
And you are the owner of the property?
I am.
Okay, and when did you buy the property?
May fifth or sixth.
Of what year?
Twenty twenty two.
Okay, now where were you living before that?
Hamilton with my parents.
And what were you looking for when you went out looking for houses?
Well, I was looking for a duplex, something that helped me with the income.
Okay, and are you employed?
I am.
What do you do?
I'm a flight attendant for Frontier Airlines.
Okay. And by the way, did you happen to, when you were looking, see any advertisement for the property? Were you given any advertisement of the property? For, by your agent in terms of, from the MLS?
No.
An inverse, but I mean inversement, how the property was listed for sale?
Oh, well, yeah, it was listed as a multifamily, which is what, you know, drew me to the property.
Okay, so your first introduction to the property was, this is a property, it's shown to you as a multifamily house. Okay, and I show you what I've marked as A one, which I think is also in your package. And this is, yes, okay, thank you. And this is from the MLS, and-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think that's, that's me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this MLL listing indicated that there was a second unit, so you can put your money to work for you, I mean, this is the way it was sold to you. So when you went to see this house, that was your understanding, is that correct? Okay, let me just introduce this as well. Now, when you went to see the property, we have already introduced into evidence a document from Mr. Reeve indicating that it's shown on the tax records as two units. And so once again, you went to see the house, that was your thought?
Yes.
Okay, and when you actually did the inspection, what did you see? Walk us through the property.
Okay, so there on the first floor, there's two bedrooms, one bath. And then there is a separate entrance that leads upstairs. And upstairs, there's a whole kitchen, two bedrooms, one bath as well.
Okay, so it's a total of two bedrooms downstairs, two bedrooms upstairs. Did the units have separate entrances? Okay, I'm going to show you documents marked A three dash eight. Because I introduced two already, I think it's four, there's not.
Actually, I had multiple listings for the house, it's three, so I'm going to mark this as A four.
Okay, four dash eight. These are photos of the house showing the interior of the upstairs and just indicate, go through these, you've got to either take the clip off and just indicate if these indicate the house that you bought, that you live in right now.
Yes.
Okay, and where is this separate entrance for the property?
It's on the left-hand side.
Facing the house?
Yes.
Okay, and it's a separate entrance, right?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, just go through and just, because I'm going to submit these, just indicate that these are all photos of the exterior of the house. I think there's an interior photo as well, if I'm not mistaken.
My house, this is the upstairs.
So the upstairs, and this is important, the upstairs has a separate kitchen? You have to speak up?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a living room next to it?
Yes.
And two bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And what's this, a picture of this last one, it's just a vacant room?
Yeah, well, it would be the living room looking towards the kitchen on the left-hand side or one of the bedrooms on the right-hand side.
Okay, and when you saw it was vacant, that upstairs, okay, thank you.
And then council tomorrow, if you would please provide the board secretary with electronic, if you have.
Electronic, I think I have them, I mailed you in fifteen copies, I believe.
Right.
So when you bought the property, I'm sorry.
So I'm thinking that these are new and the board members haven't seen them yet, so you could circulate them to you?
I'm sorry, I had mailed in.
I, I don't know if seeing, but whatever was in the package, it was, okay, okay.
I think I've part of the original application.
Okay.
Just want to make sure everybody's-
Okay, no, I wanted to. So you purchased the property in early May of last year? Okay, and at that time, you decided to look for a tenant?
I did.
Okay, and is that when you went to the housing department to get approval, which is the document I submitted?
Yes.
Okay, did they come and look at the property?
They did.
Okay, were you granted approval?
I was.
Did you know of any problem with this unit at that time?
No.
Okay, did you ultimately get a tenant? Okay, and is it, who lives upstairs?
It's a couple and their mother.
Okay, and did they actually sign a lease?
They did.
What was it, a year lease probably?
Yes.
Okay, have you had any problems with them?
No.
And at some point in time, you received a complaint from the township?
Yes. Obviously, a letter saying that I was in violation. That's the, or that it wasn't like a multifamily or guest. And went down to the township and they told me that I needed to apply for a use variance.
And that's why you're here today? Okay, I have nothing further, just for the chairman.
Was there a tenant in there before you bought the property? Do you know?
When I went to look at the house, there wasn't, it's just the owner on the first floor.
But there, can we assume there were tenants up there before?
At one point.
That's what I'm wondering from the previous owner.
If you know, if you don't know, just-
I don't really know what she, how she used the home.
Does it have two electrical and water services, or is it all service?
It's all service under one, yeah.
And so how do you divide it up?
I don't, I just, I pay the utilities in general.
Can I move in?
We don't want a parking park. Does anyone else have any questions other than before I? So, one more question. I should never look at myself through one more question. You indicated that you're an airline flight attendant? Okay, so there are times when you are away for more than a day?
Yes.
Okay, you got to speak up.
Yes.
And sometimes, how long are you away for?
Oh, well, I just came back from being gone for five days. So it can be anywhere from two weeks if I decide to take a vacation to my work schedule just being three to four days max for me.
Okay, so do you feel better knowing that there's people in the house rather than having an abandoned house while you're away for days at a time or weeks at a time?
Well, speaking honestly, I do live with my sister, so there is always someone downstairs with me. But I do feel better that I know that a guy is upstairs. There's two females downstairs, so there is a certain level of comfort with a guy being upstairs.
Okay, thank you. What's this?
Just the parking way out.
Yeah, well, I was going to- All right, so you have a car?
I do.
Okay, people upstairs have a car?
Yes.
Okay, have, you've been there since May six or seven of twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Okay, did you move in right after you bought it or a little bit after?
A little bit after, so my tenants and myself and my sister moved in in August.
Okay, since you moved in in August, and by the way, you don't have a garage, is that right?
I don't.
Okay, and you don't have a driveway?
I don't.
So you rely on off-street parking, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and since August, have you seen any problem on the street and anyone, any of the occupants of this property finding a place to park?
I have not.
Okay, and has anyone complained to you about it?
No.
Okay, thank you. This is Mr. Fritsch.
Mr. Fritsch, you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And is your last name spelled F R I T S H E?
S C H E.
S C H E, sorry. Yeah, well, no, you spelled it right, I recited it incorrectly. First name?
Robert.
Robert. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do, okay. Okay, Mr. Fritsch, you're resident of Mount Holly? Yes, where do you live? Directly across from Numany, four hundred Mountview Avenue. Four oh three Mountview Avenue. Okay, and you've only known her since she moved into the property, is that right? Yes. Okay, so I just have just a couple of questions. Since the time that she has moved in and the tenants, have there been any problems whatsoever that you've noticed that you've experienced? No, not at all. Okay, and you have, where do you park your car? Do you have a driveway? I have a driveway. Okay, she does not have a driveway, correct? That's correct. Okay, has there been any problems that you have seen on the property, on the, excuse me, on the street of any parking problems and not enough places to park? No, in fact, I, my house is on a double lot and there's parking available on my side of the street. Very rarely do cars park on my side of the street, but that's available to them if they need it. But I've never seen a problem even on her side of the street. Okay, and as a neighbor, if this board would see fit, do you have any objection to having the applicant receive a use variance to have a separate rental unit? Not at all, Numany's been a model neighbor since she moved in. Everything is good, okay, thank you. Oh, boy, boy may have some questions.
No questions.
No, I don't have a question.
No, I, I don't have a question, I have a question for Mr. Edison.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate for us to say, if you have any more people to testify, to hold off until we actually hear some of the comments from our board member, I mean, for our professionals, and then if you need more.
Mr. Chairman, any way you wanna do it, every board does it differently, and so I defer to however you wanna handle it.
So, so understand that I think your next witness is going to be a professional planner.
Professional planner.
So she may address the comments, it's up to you, however you wish to address.
Okay. Bring her on.
Ms. Morrissey, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
Tiffany Morrissey has testified as an expert before this board before, if you want, I'll go through her qualifications, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think that we've seen her before, and we've accepted her as an expert before, as have many other towns in D J's and U's counties.
I'll just stipulate, my license is still valid, current, and in good standing.
Okay, Tiffany, you've had the opportunity to inspect the property, correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay, you've done your investigation, so I'll let you continue.
So this is a unique situation in terms of requesting a use variance, there's different aspects that tie into it, and we started off with Mr. Edison talking about the equitable considerations, and how we got here in the first place. It's not often where I have the opportunity to represent a client who did everything right, and isn't coming in for a mea culpa, this is a little bit different, where she did everything right, and unbeknownst to her, something wasn't right in the process. That being said, we are addressing this as if it were a pure use variance, because that makes it the cleanest for the town, for the board, and for Ms. Woodson, moving forward. In this instance, because it's a D one use variance, I have to demonstrate both the positive and the negative criteria, that there's special reasons advanced by the granting of this application, that there's no substantial impairment of your zoning ordinance and zone plan, and no substantial detriment to the public good. I'll try to keep it very simple and brief, in terms of the positive criteria, this property is in an R two zoning district, which is where single-family homes are permitted. This home was built, I believe it was nineteen thirties, maybe a little bit earlier, so this house has existed on this property, which is a, a single lot on the street for many, many years. It historically, based on the information provided from the housing official, was used as a two-family dwelling, and the housing official indicates that it was on the tax records as a two-family dwelling. So this has a separate entrance, when you saw the photos that we introduced into and included with our application, they're not going into the house at the same entrance, there's actually even a second sidewalk that walks up to the entrance to go upstairs. So it was clearly a separate entrance and a separate layout on this property as it was purchased. In terms of the surrounding area, you have predominantly single-family in the area, but you do have some mixed-in multifamily units. You have some on Russell Street, and some on Buttonwood Street. Some of those are side-by-side units, where you can tell just by looking at them, that they are two-family units or three-family units, because they have two, two or three doors across the front of them. Ms. Woodson's property here on Mountain View Avenue looks like a single-family home, it has the side entrance off to the side, which it has had for many, many years, historical aerial show sidewalk going to that second entrance, going back, as far as the aerials are available that I could see, without the tree cover blocking the area to verify for certain, but there are many aerials that go back over twenty years that show the sidewalk going back. That's important, because what I find here is that even though this is a two-family dwelling, it still looks like a single-family dwelling. This is a nineteen thirties craftsman bungalow-style home, they have the separation, the first floor and the second floor. You have two bedrooms on the first floor, and two bedrooms on the second floor. If this were converted back to a single-family, you'd most likely have four or more bedrooms in the property, and I reference that because I'm gonna talk about parking, and the differences between single-family and the two-family, for the purposes of the professional reports. What's unique also about this property is that it backs up to the cemetery. There's an oversized lot to the left and to the right, and there's no changes proposed to this property. So what's around it is, is not home on top of home, or zero setbacks to each property line, there's open space surrounding this property. In terms of the positive criteria and the special reasons, you heard from Ms. Newmanique Woodson that she actually lives in this property, so it's actually acting as an owner-occupied unit, providing an opportunity for income so that she can have homeownership and invest into the community. It's not being rented out top and bottom to two separate people, she lives there, it's her home as well. In the positive criteria, it's my professional opinion that the site and the use are particularly suited for this split use of the property, given the existing configuration of the home, the way it has historically been laid out, and that it continues to remain featured as a single-family unit, and given the open space surrounding it and the land uses behind it. It also promotes, in my professional opinion, an establish, establishment of appropriate population densities. It's, the number of people that are living in this building, in this home, are not much different than what it would be if it were a single-family unit. The number of bedrooms would be substantially similar, four or five, if you look at the upstairs, the kitchen would most likely be converted to a bedroom, so that would give three bedrooms upstairs, and there's two bedrooms downstairs, realistically, you could have a five-bedroom home. A five-bedroom home doesn't change the density, it's still, you're gonna have the same number of people. Additionally, in terms of the purposes of zoning, this creates a desired visual environment for creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. We're not asking to come in here and cut the house in half and have two entrances and two doors on the front. Everything is existing, it remains as a single-family home with a big front porch in appearance, and it doesn't have any physical changes to the property to have you look at it and say, oh, this is a two-family unit. Additionally, providing sufficient space in an appropriate location to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens for a variety of uses. And you're going to provide an opportunity for homeownership and multifamily use, that makes sense. Doing it in a fashion in a building that's already been designated as such, fits into the neighborhood, and works well with the neighborhood, is an appropriate location for that, and this provides sufficient space for that. In terms of the negative criteria, is there a substantial impairment of your zoning ordinance and master plan, or is there a substantial detriment to the public good? Your master plan talks about improving your housing stock. It talks about encouraging the maintenance and expansion of owner-occupied housing, and it talks about investing into the community. And what you have here is a homeowner that is invested into the community, is taking care of the property, promoting that home, homeownership aspect, just finding a way to make it work so that she can physically afford to live in the community and own a home. Your community has an older housing stock, as you're aware, over thirty-five percent of your housing stock was built prior to nineteen thirty-nine, so this is, fits into that criteria of being an older home, that gets to be maintained in a fashion that it has existed for many, many years. In terms of the parking and the impact to the public good, you heard from one of our neighbors that there's no impact in terms of the on-street parking, that they've never had a problem in terms of demand for parking. This, if we look at this as if it were single-family, and we're converting it to two-family, which is not what we're doing, that's what it was, but if we look at it from single-family to two-family, and we look at the parking requirements under the residential site improvement standards. If we had a five-bedroom home, which realistically, this could be a five-bedroom home, you would require three, um, excuse me, I just wanna make sure I reference it right. A five-bedroom home would require three parking spaces. A two-bedroom home requires one point five spaces, with two two-bedroom units, that's three spaces. So in essence, it's a wash, three spaces to three spaces. If it's a four-bedroom home, it's two point five spaces, and generally, you round up when you're at the point five mark. So the impact on parking, whether it's a two-family unit, or whether it's a four- or five-bedroom, single-family home, is, is the same under the residential site improvement standards. There were comments in your professionals' report regarding a waiver of strict compliance, or there's technical terms, and as to not meeting the residential site improvement standards, that there's a unique situation here. This home has existed since the nineteen thirties, predating RSIS requirements, and even if it were to be built new, it would not require any more parking in the configuration as it exists today, than if it were built as a new single-family home on this property. Because it has existed as a single-family home with no room for onsite parking, no driveway, it has never had a driveway, it's my professional opinion that the waiver from the RSIS requirements is appropriate, that there is unique circumstance here, that it could continue to operate with the same demand for parking, and not require any waiver from compliance of the RSIS standards. And again, that's because we're treating this as if it didn't exist as a two-family unit, but as we've already indicated to you, that's not how we came to this situation, we were given approvals and a CO for a rental unit as a two-family unit. In terms of the additional impacts to the, to the public good, again, aside from the parking, which would be the biggest impact, not being any different if it was single or, or two, is the fact that we're not changing the configuration of the property, we're not making any physical changes to the structure, or maintaining it in the fashion that it has existed since the nineteen thirties, and therefore, in my professional opinion, it doesn't create a substantial detriment to the public good. It also provides an opportunity for Ms. Woodson to have a presence on her property. She has her sister living with her, but she also has other people there to help, if there's things that need to be taken care of, and it gives, and creates that community feel, because she lives there, she's not just renting out both units. For those reasons, I believe that there's a unique situation here, that this property is not, it's not something she created, she went about it in the right way, did all of the right things to get to this point, and the positive criteria of this application, and the benefits that afford, are afforded under those special reasons and positive criteria, substantially outweigh any potential detriments under the municipal land use law.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your testimony. So I'd like to ask our professionals, hearing what, would that be all?
Um, yes, I believe so, I was just gonna say that we both have, we have the reports from E R I, as well as Richard Alamo, if you were gonna, if you wanted our comments to the professionals, after they speak.
I was gonna ask the professionals, if there's, after hearing the testimony, if there's anything in their reviews that they would like to make known to you.
Uh, my main concern, obviously she said, Ms. Morrissey said, you have to provide the positives and negatives. Positives, I think, you know, stand out for themselves, I think it's probably these things, it's usually the parking, and I think we've had good testimony that it's more than adequate, you know, it's, there's no onsite, but neighbors have testified that there's not any issues. So that was our main concern, and I think that was addressed adequately.
Mr. Woodson?
And I would echo what Tim just said, maybe they provide testimony to the fact if there's adequate on-street parking. I can't argue with that, because I don't go out there and monitor the parking. So short of that, you know, we have testimony to that fact, and that's, that's, that's the way I see it.
Mr. Woodson, you have.
Yeah, and I think Ms. Morrissey properly set forth what the standard is, and went through all the testimony. She did touch upon the RSIS, Tim, would you agree with the recommendation that?
Yeah, I mean, there's no problem, so it, it's, yeah.
It's so minor, and, and, you know, based upon the construction of the, of the property, okay, I have nothing further. Oh, just from the board's reference, I did review the, the notice provided by the applicant, it was sufficient, and there was current announcements that the applicant, the application was being continued for several meetings. And just for the applicant's reference, the mayor and deputy mayor, who's not here tonight, this is a use variance, so they're not gonna participate. We do have six eligible members.
Yes, I wanted to say that, Mr. Edison, I had told you, southern barring any emergencies, I did have an emergency with one member, so we do have only six voting members.
So do you consent to proceed with six?
Yeah, can you have the public portion?
Yeah, sure. They would prefer to have the public portion before committing to, to that, understandably, so if there's any public comment, can we do that?
Could I ask one more question? The variance, is a variance for, the way I read it in one of the review letters, it was a variance for a rental unit on the second floor, but homeownership and owner-occupied dwelling on the bottom floor, is that?
Is that correct?
What we can agree to?
Yes.
The only thing is that I don't know if you wanna tie the property to that, that's what the current situation is, I don't know that you wanna.
No, I, I.
It's just for two units.
We weren't looking for, you know, a restrict, a deed restriction, for example, but the way this came about, the factual way it came about, is she bought it to live there, and that's her intention to live there, and hey, I can rent out the second floor, well, when she found out from the township, you gotta go get a use variance. So the use variance is really just to use it as a duplex, which is what we submit, is what it is. There's no intention to, to sell, is that correct?
Correct.
I, I don't know that you could enforce realistically that type of, that would discourage so much, and I think we're just up to enforce.
It's just in my mind, it's so much nicer to have a homeowner living in a rental unit all the time than it is for a property to be a rental, even if it's two units, but I defer, of course, to the resumé. We'd like to open a meeting on this subject, this application, to people in, in present here, and we can start from the first row, once again, the right-hand side. Would anybody like to offer a question or a comment? Yes, again.
Could you state your name?
My name's Dean Harner.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
And what's your address, Dean?
On one fifteen Bridgeway, being a joint, a joint in the property.
Okay.
My biggest fear of this property has come true. You've got some of the nicest people living there, that you could ask for as a, as a neighbor. Okay, so this has nothing to do with the neighbor, Alan, I've known him for almost thirty years. So this is not what I wanna be in right now, it's not where I wanna be. It's like copy of the Congress, 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 Congress bond that's had with town, you don't want a copy, I assume.
Yeah, we, we don't really accept public correspondence.
Okay, this is from the town, this is not from, okay.
What is it?
It's from the township.
Between him and township?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not, you can testify as to.
Okay, will we testify?
Yeah, I mean, this is administrative hearing, hearsay is not really invited, but you can.
First I wanna mention is, I've been a town resident since nineteen eighty-three. In the nineteen eighties, nineteen nineties, they became an ordinance that stopped houses from going from a one-family to two-family, in order to keep non-profits from taking over the town and having the tax rate was go up and have more tenants. That was done, and part of the ordinance was, I'm very nervous, I've never done this before, you know, I'm a real service officer, so you understand, sorry, but. They said that once it becomes a single-family, it can never be used a two-family again. Okay, that was part of the ordinance, I understand, back when it was done. I thought your sister lived there with you, is what I was told by your dad.
This is public comment, it's not, yeah, it's public comment.
Anyway, that's what I thought it was told, so that's where I'm, I'm confused apart, but anyway, when the first went for sale, I saw it was a two-family, I immediately contacted the town, went back and forth with Lee Mador on March seventeenth stated, in correspondence, the owner of Realtors, my opinion, this is a single-family dwelling, since you have no existing license, it should be considered a single-family dwelling. March seventeenth. On March, February sixteenth, I sent an email to the captain with my concern. On March, I'm sorry, in April, I sent emails to both Realtors, the Realtor that had listed, and also the Realtor that sold you the house, saying there's an issue here, it needs to be addressed. Never responded to me at all, never responded, never acknowledged, but never nothing, just played dumb with me. I've known the one Realtor that had listed for twenty-five years, but she never, ever, the other time, ever did, did not respond to me. Back in, in April, once again, I was, they're, oh, history in the property. It's been, with the use as a two-family, back, I would say, where the previous owner bought it. The previous owner bought it from, that you bought it from, as a single-family, they lived there with their family, they're teenage boys, old, lived upstairs, I guess, and they lived there. It was used only as a single-family for the past twenty-some years. If part of the, part that we were asking for was a variance for just an owner-occupied with a rental dwelling, I'd have no objection to that, they seem like wonderful people. But having two tenants living right behind me, not. But having two tenants living right behind me, not something I would like to have, and that would affect the value of the neighborhood as a professional. And if no other two-family houses in the area, contrary to what the young lady here said, all the family houses in the area duplex are two-family, single-family, one-side attached, like a townhouse. There's no two-family in, within a block or two of the property that I know of. I bet there's in nineteen eighty-eight.
Mr. Harner and Ms. Scotty, if I may, I don't know if it's programmed up, but I had a discussion with Mr. Harner last year about the material process.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with you to get into that. He's making his comments.
Yeah, I, when I first went to say, I was very, sorry, I didn't want to have this happen. This is the worst thing I could have happened, because here I have a neighbor that I'm complaining about that is not their fault. But the Realtors did not disclose to them the truth. And that is not my fault, that's not her fault, I'm guessing, from what I'm being told. It's the Realtors committed fraud, in my opinion.
Can I sum up what I hear you say? Is that you believe this property was not a two-family property prior to Ms. Woodson moving in, even though it had, even though it had two apartments?
Right, it was twenty years that people lived there, and their teenage sons lived there.
They lived upstairs.
Yes, I believe it. But never had a two-family in twenty years.
You believe? Okay. And you're saying now that you don't like that, that, or?
It's not just the neighborhood. Well, rental property's not good in the neighborhood.
Well, I, I think the board understands.
But my biggest issue at this point, from my viewpoint is, if the law was made twenty, thirty years ago, thirty-five years ago, saying no more a single-family, go on, two-family go to a single-family, or it means single-family go to a two-family, or it's disconverted, no more, you break the rule, you have precedent for me to go buy all the houses in town and make them a two-family. And, and it's either right or wrong. It's not a matter of that, but it's a rental property, which I do not want paid for. No other rental property anymore.
Okay, well, thank you very much, again.
And I think that covers everything.
Okay, our, so our professionals have heard that.
So, so just for your, the board's reference, each property and each variance application, this is a variance application, meaning it varies with zoning standards, so it's different. And that's the request to do. And each, each application stands on its own merits. If, if we grant one on, to this property or to some other property on High Street, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, because each successive application stands on its own merits. And you have to judge this application based upon its own merits.
And just to add to that, the previous, previous owner had come to the board and had gotten the variance, even moving here, so they didn't have a foresight, or maybe the zone had changed or whatever, they figure that, we don't have to do it. It's always been a two-family and so, so that's why, again, that's why they're here, because it is a variance.
Thank you for your comment. Any more comments in the first row, second row? Any comments, questions on the second row? Third row? In the back row? Hearing no more comments or questions, we're going to close with the public portion of this.
Yeah, may I just comment on these, um, some of the materials that Mr. Harner submitted? There's, shows an email on page, I think it's page two, from Lee Eckert, identifies the current owner, if the buyer was going to rent, to say that he would have to come to the township. Lee Eckert gave her an approval for a rental after she goes to him. I mean, I don't know what more this applicant could do. And on February seventeenth, on February seventeenth, which was long before she purchased the property, Jeffrey Reeves, the housing official, gave an email saying, "The property is still listed as a two-family." So let's face it, it was some confusion within the township. But you can't penalize this individual who did everything right. And as counsel has indicated, this is just this one property. There are other properties in the area, as our expert witness has testified, there are a few that are two-family. And we're just looking at this property, no adverse impact on, on the area as per your professionals. And when he says this is the worst scenario, well, you have a wonderful person here. And there's no adverse testimony as to the.
I agree with that.
As to this particular property. And so we submit based upon the testimony in and of itself, just on the use variance, not even counting the equitable reliance. Thank you, Mr. Harner.
Well, thank you very much. Ms. Scotty, can you give us?
Sure, so this is an application for a use variance, and during the course of the review, it, it became apparent that it would also be appropriate to grant a waiver from the residential site improvement standards with respect to parking, because there's no onsite parking. But they provided testimony of a fact, factual nature and, and professional nature, that it's not going to have a great impact, that the property was constructed without a driveway, without a garage. So that's a little bit difficult for anybody to meet that standard. So you may find that a waiver there is, is appropriate. And you've heard the testimony of Ms. Morrissey, you've heard the factual testimony, you've heard the comments from the board's professionals. You have to find that the positives outweigh, substantially outweigh the negatives, and that it doesn't harm the intent of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance if you decide to grant it. Do you need anything further? You know, you referred all the testimony. If you need anything further, is there a motion?
I would say to also, as you move forward with the vote, to put into the approval that the ingress, degress of the, the house does not change as approval to this use variance to maintain the single-family view look, that the absence of approval, that the, that the front door, the fronts of the house.
Well, that would be a substantial change. So the application they presented is no changes to the structure, so we could include that as a, as a condition of, of any approval.
And that's agreed.
We have a motion for the.
Uh, motion.
What we, we have a second.
Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Just, Mr. Banks, can, uh, Mr. Palco?
Yes.
Miss Osier?
Yes.
Miss Savage?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Is agreed.
Yes.
So we have six yeses.
Thank you very much.
Much conclusion to everything you have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Our next item is application twenty twenty-three dash four. Location is fifty-five through sixty-one High Street. The applicant is A N C B I Properties, fifty-five High Street, lot fifty, lot seven. It's in a B-one zone. It's an application for these variants and requests for waiver of the requirement to submit a site plan. Any use variance. The applicant is requesting these variants and a waiver from the site plan submission requirement so as to create market-related apartments on the third and second floor. And the applicant, I'm sure, will get more insight as we move forward.
Mr. Harner, if I may, I let the applicant's attorney know that when I came to the meeting, I had seven voting members. Since coming to the meeting, the seven voting member had issues, I think, getting here from work, so we only have six voting members. Yes, we go right to seven.
Thank you, Jennifer Singer, for the applicant. I've spoken to Mr. Howard, he's comfortable proceeding with six.
Okay.
Don't you want to, how do you vote?
Please continue.
For the record, Jennifer Singer Wellsinger appearing on behalf of A N C B I Properties. I had two witnesses this evening, Charles Howard, the property owner, a member of the LLC, and Mr. Jim Miller, our professional planner. This is an application pertaining to property number fifty-five dash six-one High Street, lot seven, lot fifty on the tax map. It's an existing building, beautiful building, has retail on the ground floor. Your ordinance is located within the B-one zone. Your ordinance permits apartments on the second and third floors, but only one apartment on each floor. You'll hear testimony as to the applicant's desire to install three two-bedroom apartments on the second floor and two two-bedrooms on the third floor and one three-bedroom on the third floor. Attached to the application in, in your package are architectural plans that are attached to the, the battery application along with photographs of, of the building. I'm asking Mr. Howard to step forward and.
So Howard, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth before this vote?
I do.
Does your last name spell H O W A R D?
Yes.
So Howard, are you the sole member of A N C B I Properties?
Yes.
And you, is that entity owned fifty-five dash six-one High Street Township in Ahali?
Yes.
Also members lot seven, lot fifty on the tax map of the township?
Yes.
Would you describe the existing building as, you know, floor by floor?
I purchased the building in two thousand nineteen, as it is in the research. It's previously owned by, excuse me, February two thousand twenty, previously owned by Mark Systems, Scott Dumens is the guy that ended there. The first floor was all retail, so you have a winery on the first floor on the left, you have a salon in the center, then you have a dress shop in, in the, for the right. Upstairs was all offices. They had thirty-five to forty employees before that, and I purchased it from him. Each, the second floor had two large bathrooms, you know, like handle a lot of people, men's and women's. Third floor the same, but it also had a kitchen. That's how it was when I, that's how it is today.
And is the second and third floor presently occupied?
It's all offices at this point, other than family members. I have a son who lives up there. Full call, hard for permission.
Are there any, are there any offices that are occupied in the second or third floors?
No, it's been continuously listed on the MLS and other places for rent. They're just offices, as you may have read, are not in high demand right now with the change of the world.
And you've owned this since February two thousand one?
Correct.
And what efforts have you made to find tenants for the offices?
Realtors, MLS, MLS licensed Realtor, I spoke, I mean, everything I can think of, networking to rent out the office space.
And is the property serviced by public water service?
It is.
Natural gas?
Yes.
Um, are, in requesting this renovation, are you adding any utilities to the building?
I'm not. Each of the retail spaces already has their own water and sewer service, and then we have gas and electric for each of the retail spaces and upstairs as well. It was previously multiple apartments, so there's a massive gas meter that already comes in that'll service, will services the four rooftop units that are presently, so there's no, no increased utility requirement.
You mentioned that there were apartments prior to the use, prior to the offices?
Yes.
How do you know?
The previous owners purchased in two thousand three. They had residential and offices on the second, third floor. Part of their purchase agreement was to get rid of the apartments and put only offices. And again, that's Mark Systems, Scott Dumens being the, you know, source for that. And then you can also go in the basement. You can see the old meters that are not functioning that are labeled apartments, you know, I won't label them, but multiple apartments.
And is your intent to upgrade, obviously, the electrical system and utilities for the apartments that you intend to construct?
Correct. Everything will be brand-new, you know, sub panels in each apartment, you know, separately needed.
Are you, how many apartments are you designing and constructing on the second floor?
Three on the second floor, each of them, two bedroom, one bath, with their own washer and dryer units, one being nine hundred seventeen square feet, the other being a thousand ninety-eight square feet, the third being twelve hundred forty-four square feet. Talking with the township and the people, this is nice, upscale loft-style apartments is what they said they wanted. That's my intention to build.
And for the third floor?
The third floor, the same size as it said, one will be two bedroom, one bath, second one, two bedroom, one bath, and the twelve hundred forty-four square foot will be three bedrooms and two baths. Again, all of them with their own in-place washer and dryers and everything else.
Do all the apartments have natural light?
They do all have natural light, yes.
And how would you have gained access to the, to the apartments?
If you're looking at the building from High Street right now, on the, on the bottom right, bottom being down the hill, there's access there that goes to the first floor, second floor, and third floor. If you look at it, again, from High Street, it would be the back left on Eight Brainerd Street, there's access there that goes to the second floor and the third floor. So they all will have multiple entry and access points, those two corners.
Are you intending to make any exterior modifications in the building?
No, I just worked with, uh, can't think of the gentleman's name, but we just had, we were part of the facade grant, and they, they just repainted everything, all the wrought iron, everything will stay the same, all the windows were painted, but no changes at all to the outside of the building.
Is there existing lighting, lighting on the building?
There is. The front of the building, all the retail space, has an Eevee hanging over with lighting that's on a timer for the township's requirements, the times they told me they wanted it to be lighted. On Eight Brainerd Street, there's a light above the primary with only entrance on that side.
And trash, how, how, how do you have the trash that you recycle?
Municipal trash, they have the big, you know, ones like everybody else where you just roll it out to the curb and you put it there. There, just right now, there's three recycling and, or there's three or four trash and there's two recycling.
And where do those containers, where do you maintain those containers?
They're on the, the backside of the building, on the Eight Brainerd side.
Now, this building occupies the entire lot, correct?
It does.
So there is no opportunity for off-street planning? You do own adjacent lot, lot six, correct?
I do.
How long have you owned that lot?
Oh, I think it was, I didn't write that down, maybe November, December of two thousand and twenty-one, when we closed on it. And then we received all the appropriate, if you recall, Eight Brainerd was a, a, a big house, four bedrooms and two bathrooms, that there was no yard, very small yard in the back, and it had been vacant for a long time, so people had been in there, doing some things, maybe cooking some things, there was a fire, so it was burned out on one side, the roof had collapsed. I purchased the building, and it completely obstructed all the backside of fifty-five, sixty-one High. Frankly, I didn't think anyone would want to live next to it, so that's why I saw, I thought it would be advantageous for myself and the town. I spoke to people in the township, the neighbors, so we tore that building down with a permit, and right now that's just a vacant lot.
And is it possible, do you have any intentions of developing that lot in the future?
I'm reserving that right at this point to, you know, see what happens. But at this point, it's a vacant lot, and that's what's there.
Presently, do vehicles park on that lot?
Yes, the, uh, my son parks there, as long as my, as well as my daughter-in-law, and then the winery, I allow them permission to park there. When they have big events, the employees park there. And frankly, some of the other neighbors, you know, they ask me, and I say, "Go ahead and park there." But just keep these spaces open for my son and Shannon, my daughter-in-law.
And the surface of that lot, is gravel?
I, I would say it's crushed stone, gravel. It's basically the entire building was. I, I would say it's crushed stone gravel, it's basically the entire building was old brick and mortar, and when they demoed it, they just crushed it, collapsed it, you know, upon itself, and then they, you know, rolled it out. So whatever you would call that material, that's what's there now.
And there's a driveway apron to gain access to that lot?
There was an existing driveway apron that they used to drive up in there.
There was comments from the engineer, so on the, that their sidewalk along Brainerd isn't need to repair. Were you in agreement that you would make those repairs as part of an approval decision?
Yes.
Did this board agree to?
In, in front of Eight Brainerd, there is brick that was there, that was level. When we did the facade grant, I gave permission to the contractor to park his lift there. And it was his heavy lift that made the bricks not level. He didn't park there again, when we saw what happened, we'll make that level. And then the portion of the sidewalk itself, the cement portion in front of Eight Brainerd, or further down in front of my property, there's a couple of cracks. Of course, we'll, we'll repair that if that people want it.
You indicated that the prior tenant was an office use.
Correct.
And how many employees did they have?
Thirty-five to forty is what he told me.
And what happened to that business, you know?
He sold his business to a different company, a larger company, they're located over in one of those high rises over by Wegamins, you know, where thirty-eight and two ninety-five cross. Part of the sale was he had to relocate over there, so he moved over there. He tried to sell the building multiple times, it fell through, ultimately ended up selling it to me.
And it's your desire that should this board approve your application that whatever parking can accommodate on lot seven would exist and the balance would be off-street parking, correct?
Correct.
What other lots or area for accommodate an off-street parking?
Well, there's the larger lot that's down behind, it's not Brainerd Street, it's, I think it's Commerce Street? One south of that, you know, further down the hill, there's a large lot, you know, up behind Oats. So when I would, when they had the software company, I'd see people walking from there, and then over across behind Commerce Street, behind like where the village ID is, people would be walking from there. That's where I would see their employees walking previously.
And is there also street parking?
There is street parking as well. Brainerd Street is, is, has signage to say resident permit parking only. So the two plus permit parkings that would go to Eight Brainerd are no longer, you know, required.
I have no other questions on this one, if any members of the board have any questions?
I'd like clarification on all the parking. I'm a little confused on business requirements, though, two and three bedrooms, the amount of cars required. You mentioned off-street parking, off-street where? High Street, Brainerd Street? And you mentioned parking in municipal parking lots, which is meant for people coming to the shop and do the good nature. So is the ask to vacate those public spots for residents per the permit, just all the units or residents?
The map, I believe, is that the, as you, I agree as your engineer reports, there are twelve spaces that are required by RSI. Twelve spaces, twelve parking spaces to accommodate the proposed application. And for, for RSI. The applicant specified there's four, five that are, can be put on the adjacent lots. And it's our position, as has been this board's position in the past, that public parking does exist within the parking lots. You know, the intent is that the tenants would be working during the day, come home in the evening when those parking lots are no longer necessary for, for daytime shoppers. That's.
That was interesting.
That's how parking is handled in private applications as well. But there is no parking on-site. And you, you heard from my planner that the prior use was much more intensive use, you know, there were thirty-five to forty people that were employed within the offices that came to that building. That would require a higher count for under our RSI. This is a much lesser intensive use by allowing the apartment to run in offices.
Where are the retail on, on Patriots Park? We've got like three, three retailers?
Correct, there's three retailers, there's the Iron Pile Vineyard Wine Tasting Room, they're open on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And they park on the street and in the municipal lots and wherever else they park. And then there's a salon in the center, you know, same, and then there's a dress shop, so.
So the adjoining lot, I mean, I think you said that there were four or five spaces on that lot?
Correct.
But then again, the applicant indicated that he wanted to reserve his right to use that for other purposes. So are we saying that this is really not a permanent parking situation on that lot?
Correct, the, the initial lot on Brainerd, we'd like to reserve for future development, maybe a single family home or build, you know, another, develop that lot. Rather than commit to parking.
So the board should actually then consider that there is no parking on that lot when they make their decision?
Basically, is it not committing to it?
Yeah.
I mean, there was a suggestion to consolidate.
There is no, you know, the building occupies the entire, the entire lot.
The property's been made available for parking, but we're not looking for a change of use or a permanent change of, you know, de-restrict or anything at this point.
Would there be any way to provide parking if these weren't apartments and they were offices like they're supposed to be? And if you went in and put office workers in there, just like it's been approved for, would we have to find parking for them? I mean, would that?
Accommodate it somehow.
It would be a variance then, it would be the RSI's requirement.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's only approved, right, for that type of thing. So they can go in there and do, provide office workers without providing a sufficient parking.
I think that's a lot of board's reasons. Well, they can right now, yeah, because that's the.
We can reserve that for a moment. We can reserve that for a moment, my planner will testify with his staff.
When my architect wrote the plans, he said that the parking requirement per the town code is for apartments would be thirty to forty percent less than the parking that's already approved, the number of workers that were there presently. So that's why he thought it would, might be a deal, but I'm sure Mr. Miller will, yes.
Should we continue the testimony with your planner?
Sure.
Seems like that would be a good proceeding.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
And Mr. Miller has been accepted, I don't know if by this board, but by like seventeen other boards in the borough and county.
It'll be seventeen.
Okay.
Mr. Miller, have you been retained by the applicant to testify and support the application?
I have.
And in the preparation of testimony, what have you done to prepare for this, for this evening?
I've been out to the site and visited the site and the surrounding area. I've reviewed the applicable sections of the township's code. I've also discussed the plans with the applicant, and I've examined the architectural plans and the survey that depicts the second question. I would also add that I've appeared before the board on two very similar applications, one for the property across the street. And one for the apartments above the Pizza Color, which is a little bit to the south. So I'm very familiar with the area, both from this application and prior applications, and as I go through my testimony, I'm probably going to refer to those from time to time.
And you're familiar with, obviously, the location of the property and the present zoning of the property?
Yes, I am, the present zoning is B one, and basically, this use is permitted, but only to the extent that there be one unit on each floor.
And describe the surrounding properties.
The surrounding properties to the north, there's a Jamaican restaurant, and then there's a law office, and then there's a friend's meeting house, and then a series of other commercial uses extending up the street. To the east of the property are basically residential uses, there's also a church and a brick building that appears to be an office, although it's not have any really, anything, wanted to identify it. But basically, it's a three-story brick building, which is located behind the Jamaican restaurant. To the south of the property, there's another series of commercial uses, there's a, there's a small park which adjoins this structure. And then from there going south, there's a series of other commercial uses, and many of the buildings also have apartment or office space above, above them. And then on the west side of the street, again, you have the same pattern, basically, the commercial, for the most part, uses on the first floor. And then the second floor is dedicated, the other uses either office or residential. And the property immediately across the street and a little bit to the north was approved by this board, I think about three years ago. For the conversion of the offices that did exist at that time above that building, to convert those to four apartment units, two on each floor.
And in that application, was there any onsite parking provided?
No.
And was public parking that was adjacent to that property, correct?
Yes. What Mount Holly basically has is a typical older central business district. And as the automobile became the dominant form of transportation, those central business districts basically created public parking to service the different businesses and residential uses that would be contained within that main street. And, you know, this is true in Morristown, it's true in Haddonfield, any of the older communities in, in the, in southern New Jersey, or anywhere else in the United States, we have basically nineteenth century main streets. You basically rely on public parking to provide any of the parking that's needed by the uses which run along the main street. And what Mount Holly has done is they've created public parking to both the east and the west of, of, of High Street. That provides collectively all the parking required for the various uses which are located along High Street. And whether they be residential uses, office uses, or, or retail uses.
And you described the existing use versus what was proposed.
Yes, actually, you've gotten pretty good testimony on that already, that basically, the existing use is the combination of the brewery testing facility, there's a salon, a rather, kind of a boutique. And a, what next, see up this thing?
Dress shop.
The rest, the dress shop. So those are basically the three commercial uses which are on the first floor. The other thing I think that's significant about the structure is that it's about seventy-five feet of frontage on High Street. And has a depth of fifty-eight feet on Brainerd. And basically, it's, it's a rectangular structure, it's very wide, and it's very deep. And that's one of the factors I think that contributes to its suitability for the use that's proposed this evening. I'm just going to say, you've also already heard description of the proposed uses, I won't repeat that testimony. And the relief we're seeking this evening is the D one variance to allow the use where it's otherwise not permitted. The apartment use is permitted to the extent that there only be one apartment on each floor. And there's also a standard requires that the lot contain two thousand five hundred square feet per unit. And we need relief for both of those controls. And also, we needed the minimus exception from the RSI standards because of the fact that we don't have any onsite parking. And, you know, basically, we've already gone through that math, but the two-bedroom units each require two parking spaces per unit. The one three-bedroom unit requires two point one parking spaces, so basically, it's twelve point one parking spaces that are required for the total development of the property. If it remained an office use under your standards, the requirement would be one parking space for every two hundred and seventy-five square feet of office space. And that would translate to twenty-seven parking spaces that would be required. So basically, the parking required for this structure is currently twenty-seven spaces. Under the relief we're requesting this evening, that requirement will go from twenty-seven spaces to twelve spaces, which is thirteen less than would be required by the office. And you also heard testimony, the reality, the office actually required a little more parking than what your ordinance would otherwise recognize. But again, the parking for any of the uses along High Street is provided by a combination of lawn street parking spaces on High Street. Some of the parking which is on the side streets, and then predominantly the balance of the parking is in the public lots which are due to the east or west of, of, of High Street.
Would you describe to the board the conditions for approval of the D one variant?
Yes, I already heard this from Tiffany, and I think I'm even going to quote some of the same municipal land use purposes. But basically, we have to show that there's special reasons that justify the relief that we're seeking this evening. And we do that by showing that the site is particularly suited for the use. And that the use that we're requesting would advance purposes of the municipal land use law. And this evening, I believe, there are three purposes would be advanced by this relief. Purpose A to encourage municipal action, to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands, and the state in matter will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Purpose B to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations, variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses in open space, both public and private. According to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And as the board knows, those are both purposes that deal with the appropriateness of the property for the specific use in question. And then purpose N, to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development. With the view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. I think that this is definitely an application which advances that purpose because I believe that the proposed use is much more efficient, is a much more efficient use of the property. Than the prior mix of commercial and second and third floor office buildings. So there's a series of reasons that I believe this use is particularly suited for the property in question. They're very similar to the uses which are the, or the criteria I cited on some of the prior applications. The first series have to do with the fact that your ordinance has a series of goals and objectives for the B one zone. And I believe this application advances four of those five objectives. First of all, it preserves the vitality and scale, character, variety, and consistency of existing urban fabric. Basically, it does that by putting this building to a productive use, as you heard from the prior witness, this, this two upper floors of the structure have been vacant for a significant time. I think that this is the third application where I personally dealt with that condition, and I think it's indicative of the fact that the market for the second story or third story office space has become very weak. Partly due to COVID, partly due to other economic factors, but there's an obvious trend at this point, that that space really doesn't work very well anymore for offices. And as a consequence, reoccupying it with a residential use is going to advance that purpose. Third, the purpose three is to accommodate a mix of uses that maintains the liveliness of the street, supports downtown commercial activity. Anytime you introduce residential uses to a central business district, you contribute to that kind of an objective. It basically creates more usage within the district. And also importantly, it means that there's going to be people present in the district in the evening, and that generates additional activity, and also generates eyes on the street. It contributes to the stability and the security of, of, of the area. Number four is add to the community's tax rateable, again, if you reoccupy the building, you're going to get more, more ratable out of it. And also, purpose five, to provide diverse residential choices while recognizing the importance of retail use on the ground floor. That's exactly what this application does, it creates another type of apartment, another apartment option within the central business district while maintaining the commercial uses on the first floor. So basically, it advances all those purposes by refurbishing the second floor and advancing the goals that are basically underwired the purposes of this suburban district. Secondly, the proposed use corresponds to the historic use patterns found in residential, or rather, traditional central business districts and supported by your B one zone. The proposed use is consistent with the existing land use patterns, there's historically always been some residential uses within this, within the High Street corridor. This just reinforces that trend and it follows. This just reinforces that trend and it follows the historic practice of residential uses above first floor commercial uses. It's basically the improvements are going to be consistent with the development characteristics of the community. Again, you've heard from the prior witness that they've already refurbished the facade of the building in conjunction with a program to achieve that that was sponsored by the township. Further improvements to the interior of the building are only going to reinforce those trends and reinforce the efforts to keep this district vital and modernized. So basically it becomes an ideal location for this use and consistent with those goals and objectives of your plan. Thirdly, the plan also provides for the efficient means of utilizing this structure and adaptive reuse of the space in question. The units are going to occupy existing spaces that can easily accommodate the six units. The second and third floors are going to remain consistent with the footprint of the building. The exterior of the building isn't going to change, it's still going to relate to the district in the same way it always has. And I think most importantly, the floor plan that's proposed by the applicant is a good fit with the structure itself. As I said earlier, the building is fifty-eight by seventy-five feet. It contains about thirty-five hundred feet on each floor. That's way too much space for a single apartment unit. It also would create a lot of dark spaces if you tried to convert it into one unit. What this floor plan does is it creates a central corridors and the units all open up off the corridor. But all of them have exposure to the exterior with a lot of windows. This building has nice windows all around, all four sides of it. And basically, it allows basically almost a square building to be utilized in a very efficient manner by grouping the building, the units around the central core of the, of the structure. And so it becomes the best way to deal with the, with the building itself. It's really not that different than if you had three narrow buildings and put a unit, you know, on each floor of a narrow building. Basically, there's three retail spaces and each one has three apartments above it. So it's very consistent with the actual intent of the code. In terms of the parking demand, this is going to lessen the overall demand for parking in this, in the district, both because of the raw numbers and also because the parking demand for residential tends to peak in the evening, whereas the parking demand for the commercial spaces peaks during the day and maybe the early evening. So they're really compatible in that respect. It's a, it's a kind of use which is better able to share the public parking than the office use that was there prior, prior to this use. Because the office use would have been operating at the same time, the commercial demand would be the greatest. So this is actually a better fit from that respect as well. The timing of the parking requirements are compatible. So, and basically it's consistent with the current development patterns in the district, which are seeing the conversion of what used to be office space on second and third floors to residential uses. So for all those reasons, I believe this site is particularly suited for the use and it does advance the purposes of the municipal land use law I cited. And as a consequence, satisfies the positive criteria. Under the negative criteria, we have to show that there is no substantial detriment to the public welfare and that there will not be a substantial impairment of the intended purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Here, I, I believe this application advances the public welfare rather than any, there's only any detriment. And that's because I think the six upper apartment units are generally consistent with the development patterns in the area. And more importantly, I think it contributes again to the redevelopment of the area, which contributes to its stability and vitality. And it's also consistent with the development patterns as well. So there's no substantial detriment to the welfare and I think a significant contribution to the public welfare. Basically, that prominent negative criteria deals with the impact on the neighborhood and I think the impact is overwhelmingly positive. In terms of the balance of the negative criteria, we have to be able to reconcile the failure to otherwise include this use within the zoning district and show that there's no impairment of the intended purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. First of all, I think it's relatively easy to reconcile this, this variance with the failure to otherwise include it. The ordinance probably reflects all the development patterns in, to a great degree. And I think that the restriction on the number of units above the, above the commercial uses is basically just a function of this, an assumption that the commercial buildings are relatively narrow. Here we have a very wide building, so it makes sense to allow a little more flexibility with the development of the upper floors. And otherwise, the use is completely consistent with the zoning. Basically, the zoning encourages residential uses on the second, third floor and that's what this application accomplishes. So I think it's relatively easy to reconcile it with the, with the ordinance itself. And otherwise, I don't believe there's any impairment of the intended purpose of the zone plan. Again, the zone plan encourages residential uses above buildings along High Street. There's been significant examples of this kind of development in the balance of the district. There's no detriment from any of that development. And again, it's a positive to create, to introduce more people into the downtown, especially during the evening hours when the residential, when the residents are going to be there. There's a de minimis exception to the parking requirements, but I think that's fully justified by the map. Your overall parking demand is being reduced from twenty-seven spaces to twelve. So you really need thirteen fewer spaces overall with this development than you would have with the prior use of the second and third floors as office space. So I believe that the de minimis exception, the RSI standards is fully justified. And as a consequence, I don't see any impairment of the intended purpose of the zone plan. Basically, the building is going to relate to High Street the way it always has historically. It's going to continue to have the commercial uses on the first floor. And the residential uses on the second and third floor are fully consistent with the existing development patterns and the overall intent of the ordinance. And in addition, it also advances the purposes of the B1 zone that I cited when I was discussing the positive criteria. So for all those reasons, I see no impairment of the intended purpose of the zone plan and I believe the application would merit your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions with Mr. Miller?
From our art professional.
Tur- Turwoos.
The parking, the public parking, how far is it? I mean, I know there's some on the front, which, you know, I guess one thing we should establish, those retailing, how late, what are their hours? When do they close?
The one use of what, just three days, three nights a week?
Yeah, the winery is the weekends, that's the one that's open in the evenings. That's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Sunday they close pretty early.
So that parking wouldn't be available necessarily for the residents for the winery that's open at night?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
He said the winery's open at night, right?
Right, that's the one that's open until, I don't know, nine or ten, whatever they're open to.
I think one part of the testimony was you have available public parking, you know, you've got it lined up on High Street, so those would be taken for anybody coming to the winery, right?
Right, the salon and the dress shop, they close, I don't know, four, five, they close pretty early.
So would there be conflict with sometimes people coming back, trying to find a spot, people using the retail offices, couldn't park? And you have to go to a public lot or?
I don't believe so, that. When I, I've been out to these sites a number of times and I've never had any problem whatsoever in finding a spot on, on High Street. And there's always abundant parking in both of the public lots whenever I've inspected those lots and I've done it at different times.
Have you been here recently at nighttime?
Not at night recently, no.
Maybe you should come at nighttime point. My question is, prior use for businesses, and those businesses parked Monday through Friday, left, were not here evenings and weekends. But since that business was there, things have changed around town, become very busy. You cannot find parking downtown, it's unavailable. So again, why is the question of parking for twelve additional residential on top of the required one spot for two hundred first of retail places?
Yeah.
Is that the answer? And how's that accommodate after hours and weekends? During High Street being closed because numerous amount of trades and festivals have rolled. And is that working in conjunction with those who are living there? And groceries back to the apartments. They have to park where, I think it's a parking lot down the corner by the courthouse because there's still parking, there's a bunch of things going on. I'm just trying to understand how this is going to work out for the people that you want to have in there. I think the idea is great, I don't understand how, I wouldn't want to rent a place there and park my car in this little lot and walk there. I would never do it.
But I think that that's, one of the options for parking is going to be at times they're going to need to rely on the municipal lots and sometimes they'll be able to park on the street. It's the way these kinds of districts function. And there's, I think, abundant, enough parking to support this use and the other uses that are in the main street. I think it's wonderful that you've got all that activity there now and that's definitely a good thing for everyone concerned. I would also add that in a lot of cases, this type of apartment unit, which is relatively small and the kind of tenant you tend to get in this type of apartment unit ordinarily doesn't require two spaces. I mean, you need to have the two spaces to meet the standard, but often
But you can determine what the person, who might be going to the apartment rental at a meeting like today? It could be the solo person has one car or it could be your family with two, three cars with two bedrooms. That's an assumption at this point.
Well, it is, but it's very unlikely it would be a family.
But it's still an assumption.
It could be a couple with two cars, but, you know, no questions about it. That's why RSI's requires the two spaces.
Well, I understand that your ordinance allows an apartment on each floor.
It does, and it was written such way to allow one, for that reason, to park it.
Well, but you would now construct in this building a three thousand square foot apartment.
Understood. Still doesn't discredit the parking situation that we have.
Well, but you're looking at eight spaces basically, net versus thirty or so, thirty-seven spaces required by office.
Again, understood. Also different types of parking based on the use.
Yeah, and you wouldn't be carrying grocery bags if you're an office worker. You know, on a December day when it's snowing, you know, it's
That's a, that's a lifestyle choice, that's the tenant is going to make. And tenants have made that lifestyle choice historically for generations. Almost any
But this is not, this is the, this is the thing, I understand, understood. This is not a big city.
It's a use variance.
Okay.
So you're not supposed to really participate.
All right.
Okay.
Is there an ability to use the other one?
It's available for parking right now.
But we can use it as part of the condition if it's not part of the application.
Committing to it. He doesn't want to commit to the use of it, that's the point.
But if there's another use, that's going to make things even worse.
Yes.
And the other thing to consider, I mean, this is really a density issue. You're supposed to have twenty-five hundred square feet per apartment. So if you do the math, it's twelve thousand five hundred square feet. And your property is not even five thousand square feet. So technically, you can't even have two.
And I don't think there's an example of any structure along that section that would meet that standard. Twenty-five hundred is just not viable.
But it's still a standard.
It is a standard and that's why we put it on the record, but it's, it's not an achievable standard.
Well, and that's, so that brings us to the next point, you own the next lot. And, you know, that's still not going to get you to the area you need, but I think it's twenty-four hundred square feet. That would reduce the density requirement, right?
Let us defer.
Do you want to take a five minute?
Let's take a five minute.
Want to take a five minute break? All right, taking a five minute break at eight forty-six.